Ready? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the Board of Trustees meeting for the town of the city of Bloomington on this Monday, June 23 at 5:30 PM. We'd like to have a call to order and then please stand the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silent reflection.
Pledge of Allegiance is black. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call for attendance, please. Madam Clerk?
Trustee Kearns?
Here.
Trustee Mosley?
Here.
Trustee Montney?
Here.
Trustee Danenberger is absent. Trustee Strazza?
Here.
Trustee Hendricks?
Here.
Trustee Ward?
Here.
Trustee Lee?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
Trustee Brady?
Here.
Matter of public comment this evening?
Not for township.
Okay. Thank you. Move then to the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like, uh, excuse me, Trustee Brady?
Yes.
I'd like to move to poll item 5B.
Okay. Item 5B. Remove from the consent agenda. We'll come back to it. Are there any other trustees that wish to have any other items on the consent agenda? Hold. Okay?
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda with the absence of item B.
Second? Second, thank you. Trustee Strazza and Trustee Hendricks. If we go ahead then and take the other items first and then we'll come back to 5B.
You want to vote?
Okay.
Phil, are we using clickers?
We're going to use your clickers.
Take the record?
There are no needs to announce.
Thank you very much. Now we're moved back to the consent agenda to item 5B that Trustee Ward would like to discuss.
Yeah, I think this is just a Scrivener's error, but there are a couple of places at the bottom of the first page and on the second page toward the middle where it refers to Trustee Molelambwe and I think that was probably just an old template, but...
That's correct. It was just an old template. I apologize.
If that can get corrected, I would move approval.
Second?
I'll second.
Trustee Hendricks, thank you. Good catch there, Trustee Ward. All right. We go ahead and take a vote?
Yes, use your clickers again.
Okay.
No needs to announce.
Thank you very much. Then moving to the regular agenda for this evening's trustee meeting, township meeting. Reports by elected officials. Township Supervisor?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
If you might move it just a little closer.
Got it. Okay. So the first thing I want to do is read you a statement, okay? Members of the board, I would like to inform you that a recent feedback was received from a client who expressed concerns about the township's current workfare guidelines and the participation in that. While most interactions with clients remain positive, there have been some negative sentiments, particularly regarding the perceived inflexibility that we have regarding our workfare program. So in the case that I'm speaking of, a client felt that her concerns were not, may not have been fully considered. And it's important for you to understand that the township maintains established work site, an established work site designated for those restrictive issues, health concerns. And in order for us to make a decision whether somebody qualifies for that, we must have a consent to release medical form and it's signed by a physician for us to determine if somebody fits into the workfare program. And so there's questions regarding that in the client's eyes. In recent months, more individuals that are coming to township are facing serious personal and financial challenges and they've come to township for assistance. Many of these cases involve health and social issues that can influence how workfare assignments or requirements are viewed and experienced. So from their perception, it seems to be a little bit more of a struggle. In recognizing these factors, I reviewed this with my staff and our current, with our current guidelines in mind. And at this time, I have determined based on this particular case that there is nothing that could be changed in regards of how we handled it. However, we remain committed to evaluating how we communicate what our requirements are, or workfare requirements, and how we can better support the clients in understanding and navigating the process of the mandatory requirements of workfare. The client that I'm referencing has put an appeal into township and that's currently at the Public Aid Commission and will be setting up a scheduled time for that. And the township will await the outcome of that hearing and proceed in accordance with the commission's findings. So, any questions regarding that?
Members?
Are we allowed to ask some questions since it's not on the agenda?
I don't know. It's just, it's just my supervisor's report. So if you have misunderstandings...
That's what you want to highlight out of your report?
Yeah, I'm highlighting that specifically.
I mean, is it in the report?
Well, no, that's not in the report. You're right. Maybe you're not supposed to, I don't know.
But due to the confidentiality of the situation, you've advised the board of trustees...
I wouldn't tell anybody any confidential information.
Right, but you're just advising us that there's a process that's ongoing.
That you'll be hearing from. And it may not be this meeting, but it may be some, so...
Are all the trustees comfortable with that proceeding?
It's not for you to judge.
Let it go through the appeal process?
It's not any of us to judge the situation. The Public Aid Commission will judge that.
No, I understand that, but you indicated there's...
That happen occasionally.
You indicated there's appeal process ongoing, is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, it's already been submitted and ready to go, so just awaiting information.
Thank you.
Just a heads up that you may hear some disgruntled...
Okay.
Occasionally, you might hear a disgruntled client at some point, but know that our staff is fully qualified to handle the situations and we are abiding by the law in everything that we're doing.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other points within your report that you wish to advise?
Yeah, in the hand, in my notes, I talked about the cemetery over time got modified a little bit because they were seeing the need for that. We do have one, and this is something I wanted to share with you, we do have one employee handbook. That's not necessarily true for any particular township, but we've worked together with the cemetery and the assessor's office and they have the ability to modify their, how they handle their employees, but we put it under one roof and one employee handbook that we're servicing for all three portions of, or three, well, the other elected official, which is the assessor's office, and then the cemetery, which is a component unit. So we pulled it all together because there are many state statutes or federal statutes or state statutes that come through policies that need to be changed. So we're doing that all in one and then pushing it to the different areas. So in this particular situation, the cemetery needed a slight change to their policy or their procedures that they do things, so we did that.
Okay.
So we just asked that you, you know, I don't know if you have to approve that one, is that part of it? It's just a note for you to understand it. There's no approval necessary for the handbook.
So if I, so if I understand correctly, there's, there's a question or a change in the overtime policy regarding Evergreen Cemetery?
Yeah, there was.
Okay.
I'm done.
Some other points in your packet you'd like to point out to us?
You can just read the rest.
Okay. Any trustees that have a question or comment? If not, that concludes your report. Thank you very much. Mr. Assessor?
Good evening. I give out the, I didn't see any changes in any of the exemptions that are available to the taxpayers for property tax relief through their assessment. There is a list of all the exemptions from the county's website and how they are handling them. There was concerns on the senior freeze exemption and some debate that there may be an increase on the maximum amount of, or the maximum income that they can have in filing for the freeze. It was, it was at 55 at first, $55,000, and then it went up to $65,000. It's been at $65,000 for quite a few years. So I think there was some discussion on getting that exemption increased to a higher amount to raise the level for the senior freeze. That's, any questions on any of those?
Any questions or comments from trustees? And assess or any other points within the report you'd like to point out to us?
Well, I would suggest that everyone review their tax bill and see if they have the allotted exemptions they're qualified for listed on their tax bill and if not, to contact the supervisor of assessments office to see if they're entitled for a refund or rebate.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. That conclude the remarks? Thank you. All right. Any other items for discussion? Madam Clerk? Okay. May I have a motion then to adjourn the meeting?
I'll motion to adjourn.
In a second, please. Seconded by Trustee Monte and Trustee Michael Strauss. Thanks. Thank you very much. This can conclude the township meeting then at 5:42 PM.
Sorry, we need a vote.
Oh, sorry, a vote, yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Electronically. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Bloomington City Council on this Monday, June the 23rd. If you please stand for pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you'd call for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Kearns?
Here.
Councilmember Mosley?
Here.
Councilmember Montney?
Here.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Here.
Councilmember Strazza?
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Mayor Brady?
Here. We have public comment this evening, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. We had thirteen emailed public comments, and we have nine registered to speak in person. If you'd like, I can read the names of the emailed public commenters.
Okay.
Jerry Klinker, Diaz Troyer, Michelle White, Patrick. I can't read my own handwriting. I apologize. Starts with an O. Casey Carlson, Amanda Boitnot, Nikki Green, Carthrik Ramsme, Cindy Schilslar, Sybil Nash, Melanie Docker, Michelle Fitzgerald, and Catherine Bell. And then after you read your statement, we'll have Amanda Boitnot as our first commenter.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, that'll be reading their statements. The public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It's also then opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, and each speaker is going to be given three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. And any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased. So our first speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Amanda Boitnot. I'm a licensed massage therapist, sole proprietor here in Bloomington. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and for previously pausing the original licensing fee proposal to reconsider its implications. We appreciate your willingness to revise the ordinance and to clarify that state-licensed massage therapists would not face additional city-specific regulations. Unfortunately, the latest update appears to contradict that earlier message. Now we're being told that all massage businesses, regardless of their setup, will fall under this new ordinance. This abrupt change is confusing and raises concerns about the consistency of the city's communication, as well as your understanding of how massage therapy is already regulated in Illinois. As professionals licensed by the state, we are subject to comprehensive oversight under the Illinois Massage Licensing Act. That includes sanitation standards, defined scopes of practice, mandatory continuing ed, thorough client documentation, and a binding code of ethics, all monitored by the Illinois Department of Financial and Professional Regulation. Additionally, we register our businesses legally through county channels, often operating under DBAs and maintaining accountability at multiple levels. If your intention is to reduce unlawful or unethical activity, I urge you to rethink how this ordinance might backfire. By exempting home-based practitioners but burdening others with new regulations, you may unintentionally drive bad actors into residential settings where oversight is far weaker. This doesn't eliminate the issue, it simply moves it. This proposal is no longer just about licensing costs. It reflects a deeper misunderstanding of our profession and a troubling generalization about who we are. We're not operating in the shadows. We're credentialed, trained, and committed to ethical, client-centered care. Grouping us with exploitative or unlicensed entities is unfair, inaccurate, and damaging. What we're asking for is not exemption, but partnership. Let's slow down and work together to craft policy that's informed, fair, and acknowledges the integrity and regulation already in place for massage therapists in Illinois. We're eager to be a part of the conversation, but we want to be seen clearly for who we are and what we contribute to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Next speaker, please.
Next, we'll have Erica Hartman.
Good evening. My name's Erica Hartman. I am a licensed massage therapist, sole proprietor in Bloomington. I'd like to start with something positive. I'd like to say thank you for listening to us and for amending this ordinance's financial burdens. I've sent many emails in the last two weeks with questions and concerns. So I'd like to shout out to Ms. Ward, Mr. Hendricks, and especially Mr. Jurgens for always replying to me, even on their days off, even on the weekends. It's refreshing to see that at the local level, government is working the way it was intended, with public input from citizens who are directly impacted by the laws that you're enacting. I do believe your efforts are genuine, and I appreciate the attempt to reduce our fees and understand our position. However, I am still opposed to this ordinance. The city has repeatedly tried to distinguish this license application as one that is solely to regulate our establishment, not our profession. But there is no clear line here on what you are regulating. While some of the information that you're asking for makes sense, like a copy of our lease or stipulations on what our hours, our offices can be open, how the front of our building should look, it goes off the rails from there. Please tell me how the following information would relate to my physical office space on this application: my social security number, my date and place of birth, my personal email address, my private residential address, my business record-keeping, how I launder my sheets, how I store my oils and lotions, how I wash my hands after a session, what I wear to work, what parts of the client's body I am not allowed to touch, and the worst, my height, my weight, my eye color, and my hair color. Tell me what other job there is that would put that on an application for a job that I do. All of that is in the existing ordinance as written. I don't understand what's going on here. None of that relates to my office space. This ordinance presumes that I'm guilty until proven innocent. It's insulting to those of us who are licensed professionals and have been for decades. In your efforts to catch criminals, who do sometimes hide behind our profession, you're turning us, the legal-abiding people, into scapegoats. If you truly want to regulate my establishment, then just ask me for my state license, my lease, and perhaps my insurance policy, which surprisingly hasn't been asked for. What I weigh and where I live is not relevant. Neither are all the stipulations on how I work. We deserve to be treated with respect, and this ordinance falls short. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Erica, next speaker, please.
Next, we'll have Michelle White.
Good evening. My name's Michelle White. I'm a licensed massage therapist in Bloomington for fifteen years. I'm speaking again this evening to ask that you table this ordinance until there can be further clarification on some of the language of what applies to massage therapists practicing as solo practitioners or licensed therapists in general. I also ask for clarification on the application process for massage establishments. Why are therapists working in a chiropractic clinic or a physical therapy clinic going to be getting any more respect than those working at a solo businesses? In an email dated 6/17 from Mr. Jurgens, he specifically stated, and I quote, "The revised ordinance does not regulate individual massage therapists who are exclusively licensed by the state of Illinois under the Massage Licensing Act. Instead, the ordinance applies only to the establishments which are not currently licensed or regulated by the state." Then in an email dated 6/2025, he again stated, and I quote, "It is my understanding that the proposed ordinance does exempt therapists practicing out of their home or providing services in their clients' homes, but those practicing in places of business or storefronts are not exempt," end quote. It has also been stated that the yearly licensing fee has been eliminated through local news media. However, the ordinance, as it read as of last night, still stated that every year there would be a renewal fee every April 1st. Here are some of my questions. What other healthcare professionals licensed through the state do you ask to renew their business license yearly? Is it the practice of the city to ask the following information from other business entities or healthcare workers when they apply for a license? Their previous address for the last three years, their cell phone number, their email address, their height, their weight, their eye color, and their hair color? Previous employment history for three years, their date of birth, their place and origin of birth, their gender, their last two residential addresses, and a summary of their job duties. It is also stated in the current ordinance that if I were to have employees, this would be asked of any and all employees as they may change hands, come or go, be fired, find new jobs. What is their name, any aliases that they go by, their date of birth, their place and origin of birth, their gender, their residential address and cell phone number? I could be uninformed, but I have worked in other businesses in my life in this city, as well as been a manager in some, and to my knowledge, we've never had to provide that information on our employees. It seems cumbersome and a waste of time and resources. If other businesses are not required to provide the same information for applications, then it seems that this is discriminatory and targeting licensed massage therapists, assuming we are already guilty of something before anything has taken place. Do other businesses also need to provide computer-generated floor plans of their offices and list the types of activities being done in each room of their office? This ordinance states that that would be the case. I will state again, as I did on June 9th, other licensed healthcare professionals in the state are not treated this way by the city. They are not asked to prove each year that they are still licensed or that they have not committed any criminal activities set forth by any ordinances.
I'm sorry, but we're out of time.
Michelle, can you bring your comments to a close?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next up, we'll have Christina Felkner.
Good evening. My name's Christina Felker. I'm a licensed massage therapist in the town for ten years. First, I want to thank the city council for taking the time to hear our voices and for tabling the original licensing fee proposal. We recognize and appreciate the steps that you've taken to revise your approach and pre-stating in a previous communication that individual massage therapists licensed by the state of Illinois would not be subjected to additional city regulations. However, your most recent clarification now states that all massage establishments, regardless of structure, will be affected by this ordinance. The sudden shift raises serious questions about the consistency of your message and your understanding of how our industry actually functions under Illinois law. As licensed massage therapists, we are actually already governed by the Illinois Massage Licensing Act. This includes strict hygiene protocols, scope of practice boundaries, continuing education requirements, client intake procedures, soap note documentation, and ethical standards, all enforced by the Department of Financial and Professional Regulation. In addition, we file our business paperwork through the county circuit clerk's office, and many of us operate under legal DBAs with accountability already in place. If the goal is truly to curb illicit activity, I urge you to consider the unintended consequences of this ordinance. By excluding home-based therapists, you are pushing the very problem you're trying to prevent into residential areas where regulation is even less visible. This approach doesn't solve trafficking, it simply relocates it. This is no longer just about fees. It's about the fundamental misunderstanding of our profession and a mischaracterization of our businesses. We are not anonymous service providers. We are licensed professionals who prioritize client safety, skilled care, and a healing environment. Lumping us in the same category as unregulated exploitative operations is not only inaccurate, it's harmful and it's hurtful. We respectfully ask that more time and collaboration be invested into understanding what sets legitimate massage therapy apart. Our industry is rooted in trust, education, and state oversight. We are not opposed to working with the city, but we want to ensure the result is thoughtful, effective, and honors our professionalism that we bring to our communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Christina, next.
Next, we'll have Brian Fitzgerald.
Hello, my name is Brian Fitzgerald. I'm the owner of Bloomington Normal Massage Therapy here in Bloomington, and thank you for hearing my comments today. I do appreciate the city's approach of stepping back on this and looking at it. But I do feel that this ordinance, as the way it stands and the way it's proposed tonight, is going to fall way short for both trafficking and for licensed massage therapists. Being a sole proprietor, I have a lot of things that come across my desk every day, and this one really concerns me because not only does it question, like many of my colleagues pointed out, my ethics and my standards, but it does require additional fees. It does require additional licensing. It means additional people will be coming into my business, and I'm a sole proprietor. The only person I can traffic is myself. There's no one in my business. I feel like I should be excluded from this, as well as many of my colleagues. And I would ask you to consider that licensed therapists, not just the establishment, be looked at. So when I look at the language and some of the emails that have gone back and forth, my concern is that it's really not clear. And I think we really need some clarity here, and I would really like to be included on some of this discussion. I feel like a lot of it's been announce and inform versus sit down and really partner with licensed therapists. So I feel like that piece has been left out. I'd also like to mention that as a sole proprietor, you know, the establishment, I can see that being a term that needs to be looked at and defined more clearly. You know, it is a place of business, but in a trafficking situation, you would have to have more than one person work there. There, by definition, I'm a licensed massage therapist, therefore I can't traffic really only myself. Therefore, I should not be held to this ordinance. It really needs to be reviewed one more time. Again, I want something to be done because I don't want trafficking to continue. But my establishment's never going to have that happen unless I would bring somebody else in. So it's really concerning how it affects the small guy in this case, and the big guy that's getting away with it continues to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Brian. Next?
Next, we'll have Marion Schultz.
Hello and good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. In an attempt to not be repetitive for everybody, I'm going to say thank you first for the language revision. I'm not a massage parlor. I am a massage therapist, credentialed. I have a business. I've been through it. All of these people, my wonderful colleagues, went through that for me before I stepped up here. I would say one of the things that was left over that I'd like to discuss is my most recent clarification of the ordinance. It does not apply to massage therapists, but yet we are still lumped in with that hundred dollars. And we've all gained licenses. So it's written to give a license to some, but the only people that then that that leaves is unlicensed people, not licensed by the state because the state is the only one that can do that. So for all of these different modalities, it should be state-licensed. So I'm not exactly clear who that license is going to. I understand the establishment clause. And my colleagues as well went into that. So I would say the following statement is in no offense to massage therapists who do provide in-home therapy. I myself have done this. It's usually related to mobility or end of life. That being said, with the revisions, if everybody up here can understand the idea of like okaying or protecting call-out massage versus a therapeutic massage in a prepared therapeutic, hygienic, sanitized area. And I myself, when I started my business, I read through the original ordinance to a T, and I do everything that is listed. I do what I'm supposed to with my sheets. I do all of those things. The only person that has ever come to check on me for all of those things that I do, I guess maybe would be like the fire inspector has come in and looked at my business. So even though those were already on the books, there was nobody enforcing them. With the tech these days, the ability to schedule a victim in a human trafficking world and take them into, from a brick-and-mortar establishment, then into a potential, like even, what would you call that, rental? then into a potential, like even, what would you call that, rental, vacation rental home, I guess we should say. Now that's in, who knows, like it could be in any one of our neighborhoods, and there's not a lot of, like, people in your neighborhood might just come and go and not pay attention, whereas if it's in a public place, I hate to say that it's, you know, but then more people are seeing it, more people have the opportunity to report it. If we just tuck it away, what could that potentially be for us? And then also, new massage therapists, that may be their only way to get ground is to do in-home massage, and if they can only do that versus pay a fee, like it makes brick and mortar harder to obtain for a new massage therapist. So thank you for everything you've done. We do still have some ground to go. If you'll give it to us, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Mary Ann.
Next, we have Nicole Nagel. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Lisa Schaefer. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Oh, my name is Patrick Whitaker. I'm the owner of Shake It Up right here on Front Street. I'm just going to start by reading a couple of facts. On April twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-two, regarding the QuickTrip, QuickTrip stated that they need gaming licenses to compete with nearby truck stops that have video gambling. They have video gambling. A WGLT article on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, Councilwoman Montney said in regards to the building developments, "As I think about food and beverage, the existing restaurants, businesses, and what are we doing to ensure that there aren't unintended consequences of creating a disadvantage to them competitively? Holding back gaming license does just that." Dan Brady, Mayor Dan Brady, at a meeting June fourth, a question was raised regarding bringing revenue into the city where gaming was discussed. You said, "Unfortunately, there isn't a magic string that can be pulled to bring extra money into the city." You're right, there's not. There is saying yes to gaming licenses. This has been brought up twice by my wife and I, as we've been on the waiting list for a year and a half. My wife came forward and brought dozens and dozens of emails from everyone's constituents claiming how much they support video gaming. I know there's at least as many board members on here to bring it to a vote. If you're worried about the big guys being mad, say so, be honest. At least I know in that honesty that there are some people who don't care about local businesses. If you view this as a morality issue, you haven't started a business with your own hard work, drive, sacrifice, blood, sweat, and tears, or if you've witnessed a loved one go through that, the answer is simple. The businesses on this waiting list are established. I'm not trying to become a gaming parlor. I'm not trying to become rich. I'd like to know that when an AC unit blows, or a compressor fails, or when a cooler goes down, or payroll, or rent, that I don't have to scramble to find these funds. These are the things that can, do, and will kill a small business, and they can, do, and will kill that small business. Put yourself in my shoes and other small business owners' shoes and ask if it makes sense. Will these local businesses here have a better shot at success with video gaming? Yes. Will the city profit by literally doing nothing but saying yes? Yes. Does the city gain any money? Yes. You all know the answer. Make it make sense and make the right choice. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Patrick. Next?
That's all we have this evening.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next, if we can move to the consent agenda, are there any members who have items under the consent agenda they would like to see If not, can I have, I'm sorry?
I'll move to approve.
Motion second. I remember Strazza and motion by Representative, or I'm sorry, Member Hendrix. All right? We vote, please? Roll call taken?
There are no, there are no names to announce.
To report. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move to the items for action on tonight's agenda, and that would put us to item seven A under the regular agenda, which is consideration and action on an ordinance amending the Bloomington City Code, updating chapters twenty-two and the schedule of fees pertaining to massage establishments licensed administered by the city clerk as requested by the city clerk department. I'd like to ask our city manager, Jeff Jurgens, if he would go ahead and please explain the latest updates to the ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We don't have another full presentation to provide tonight, but wanted to provide an update as to where we were from a couple of weeks ago. We did reach out to those who had provided comment and feedback. At least one person reached out and wanted to meet with us. Our corporate counsel, Chris Spanos, and I met with them, talked about some of the ordinance, and we got a number of, some feedback as well, some of it more recently, and so we have a couple of amendments that have been discussed that I want to share tonight. Phil, if you could bring up the PowerPoint. The primary change in the ordinance that was brought forward was related to the fee structure. So the change is that the application fee stays at a hundred dollars, but that includes the seventy-five dollars that we'll have to pay for the background check. So there's the hundred dollar application fee, that's a one-time fee. Then there's, we waived or are proposing to put zero as the annual fee, so there'd be no annual fee, even though, go back, Phil, even though the ordinance references, you know, an annual fee, it all refers back to the schedule of fee, which shows zero for that, so there's no other fees associated with it. The thought behind proposing that is really what we want is compliance, and we want to get a regulatory structure in place, and I sympathize and I appreciate all the feedback here tonight and that we've received over the last few weeks. We understand that we have a lot of great massage therapists out there and establishments, and we understand that the illicit ones are likely not going to go through this process, and that's, but we will use this regulatory process to shut them down. It's not saying we're not going to also use law enforcement, but this administrative process will be quicker and it'll likely be more effective. So with some of the feedback and with speaking with some of the council, we do have a couple of other amendments to consider, Phil, if you could go to the next slide. One amendment, and I've labeled these as text amendments, but one amendment updates the application requirements. We discovered that the questions regarding height and weight and eye color, that was actually from our code in nineteen seventy-five, and that got carried forward. So staff would recommend that if you're going to approve this, that you also approve text amendment one, which goes back to and utilizes what some other communities use. There are some requirements for social security numbers. The rationale for that is because we need those for the background check, but that is what text amendment one is. Then there's text amendment two and three. Those are both text amendments that deal with the sole proprietor issue and provides, just like we have an exception for individuals, licensed therapists that operate out of their homes, or that go to private homes and operate, this would provide an exception for sole proprietors as well. The one distinction I would make you aware of, though, is that it also requires the sole proprietor, because they are operating in a commercial establishment, to provide a copy of their state license and to, you know, provide a sworn statement that they're not working with other individuals, that they're truly acting as a sole proprietor. And the difference between text amendment two and three is two requires the sole proprietor to also comply with the operating requirements of the ordinance, and three has limited requirements for the operating requirements. And just to give a brief overview of that, three exempts out things like the opaque door and the dress code and some of those other things that might not be applicable to just a one-person operation. And so that's what text amendment three, two and three are. Text amendment four takes out the language altogether on the dress code. This is something that's been in some of the model ordinances that we've seen. It requires, you know, just, I'm sure everybody's already complying with this, but there's been some discussion about this, so if the council were to desire to do so, text amendment number four just takes out the dress code requirements. I will say that the, we cannot, as a city, license the individual therapist. We are only licensing the establishments, only the businesses. And so where I think there has been some confusion and maybe some overlap is, for those that are acting as a sole proprietor, you know, it does, you know, we look at it as we're licensing the business, which is their sole proprietorship. They look at it as, you know, they're getting, you know, licensed twice. So that is, you know, an area in the law that we thought was at least, based on some of the conversations we've had, worth bringing forward a couple of potential additional amendments for the council to consider. If you go to the next slide, Phil, the process for this tonight, you can make a motion to approve as presented. You can make a motion to approve with text amendment one and text amendment three, or you could make a motion to approve, get a second, and then do amendments from there. Really open. Also, obviously, you can table this and we can continue to talk about it and work through it. Staff is certainly willing to do whatever the council desires, however the council desires to move this forward, but wanted to provide all the options and hopefully a path forward if the council wants to take action tonight.
Thank you very much. Members of the council with questions, Member Ward.
Yeah. I thank you for the work on this, everybody. Thank you all for speaking up about this and making your views known. I would like to move to approve the ordinance with several revisions. I would like to move to approve the ordinance with text amendment one, with text amendment three, and with text amendment four. As has already been stated multiple times, oh, so that's my movement.
I would second that. Second?
Second by? Before we act on that motion, because I know that's a motion on the floor.
I want to discuss.
Can we discuss?
Yeah, I want to give my thoughts behind it.
Go right ahead.
So my reason for proposing that we amend based on text amendment one and text amendment four, those are the ones that get at the background information, like hair color and eye color and all that, in my opinion, foolishness, that really is not relevant to this discussion. Text amendment four removes the language required dress code. I don't think that it's appropriate for government entities to tell private businesses what they should have as a dress code. Certainly, private businesses can have dress codes for their employees. That's perfectly appropriate, but it's not my job as a member of the government to tell you what your dress code should be. So those are those two pieces. Text amendment three is the one that relates to sole proprietors. Personally, I think that the likelihood, as has been stated here, of having dodginess going on is more likely when this stuff is hidden away in a private residence than it is in a commercial business space. If we are going to have requirements for some sole proprietors, we should have requirements for, the same requirements for all sole proprietors. And so, in my view, we should have some requirements, but they should be consistent. And so some of the ones that I would suggest taking away, and I'll cite these out here, I just need a sec to, yeah, thank you, the yellow highlighted one. So for example, one that would be removed would be that pertains to the supervision. Obviously, if you've only got one proprietor, we don't need to have a provision in there talking about supervision. You're supervising yourself, so let's ditch that one. The employee dress code. If you don't have employees, you don't have to have an employee dress code, and we're already talking about dress codes being ditched, so let's get rid of that one. The separate license, a license shall apply only to the specific premises identified in the license application and subsequent license. Again, you're talking about a sole proprietor. You're not talking about multiple locations. Let's get rid of that. The transfer of license also feels like it should be removed for those same reasons. This would also remove the visibility requirement. Frankly, if I'm wanting to rent an office space to have a business, it's very limiting to know that I couldn't rent above any number of buildings right here in downtown that wouldn't have a transparent window. It's very limiting. And how that is somehow fair, frankly, to people who are renting in a commercial space, but out of a residence, they're allowed to be behind closed windows and curtains and so forth. That just doesn't make sense to me. As has already been stated, we've got more people coming and going in a commercially rented space than you might have in a neighborhood. And if I put, you know, if I spray paint my home window black and nobody can see through there, why is that fair when we're allowing, when we're insisting, we would be insisting, that a commercial rental space have a picture window that everybody can see through? So I'm suggesting that we get rid of that one. And then, eating in the massage and/or bodywork areas shall not be permitted. If I'm a sole proprietor, maybe I need to be able to eat my lunch or have a snack if I have low blood sugar. That just seems silly to include there. So those are the ones that I'm proposing to remove.
Okay, we've got on the floor a motion that's been seconded, so if we can keep our comments to what Member Ward's motion is right now. So, remember, mostly?
My comments were in addition to that, so.
Okay. Is there anyone else that has specific comments to what Member Ward has proposed and has been seconded? Member Montney?
Just asking if City Manager Jurgens could read for us what, I know we've got two different sections that relate to dress code, one that was pointed out in the employee section, but what is the dress code requirement that we're talking about?
The dress code requirement that we're mentioning here is that they should wear clean, non-transparent outer garments, fully cover all private areas, and then you can't disrobe in whole or in part while in the presence of an individual receiving a massage. Those are the dress code requirements I'm familiar with. Are there others? And that's in twenty-two dash one thousand eight C.
So and as I understand it, the proposal in front of us, I mean, these are businesses, wherever they're located, we're being asked to remove that requirement.
Yes, that's a motion.
We're being asked to remove that requirement from this ordinance. We are not placing that requirement on any other business, and that's why I'm asking to remove it from this ordinance. If we were to make that a requirement for every business in this community, we can talk about that, but at this point, it's unfair, and what it implies is that this business is somehow troublesome and different from any other business, and I think that's unfair to people who are licensed healthcare providers in our community and professionally-trained
Member Montney, other questions? Other members pertaining to the motion, I'm sorry?
Yeah, and it may not pertain to the motion, but I think it's something that we should consider even adding on, or if I can get clarity regarding that, and that's regarding some of the things that were discussed, such as the personal information, like SSN, floor plans, and things like that. And the reason that I asked for this, and it's not just for sole proprietors, it's because I know that there's massage therapists that exist in chiropractors, which we've discussed, but there's also in hair salons, but it seems like we would be excluding some of these restrictions. But it seems like we would be excluding some of these restrictions to just the massage therapist organizations or sole providers or organizations that have declared that that's their sole profession. But if we're trying to get at the root, my thought is, what are those other avenues that we're considering for the practice of massage therapy? And the reason I ask that is, right, do we open ourselves up? We're asking for social security number and other personal information, right, that now we're we're going to be on the hook to be a custodian of and protect that against theft, loss for a business entity, sole proprietor or not. And then are we not putting those other restrictions on others? And so is it meaningful? I know other cities may do that, but is it even meaningful for us to acquire that information?
And and I might ask staff to help me out with this. But so specifically, the the concern about asking for social security numbers?
Social security numbers and even the floor plan layouts.
So the and I'll let our attorney and our clerk address the social security numbers. I think for the floor plan, that's something that we do require in different situations. And for a variety of reasons, so that we we know, you know, and with different businesses, where things are and where they're supposed to be. And that can also help from a public safety standpoint if if we ever have to go into one of those businesses. I will refer to staff to see if they want to comment on the social security numbers. I will say we are governed by law. We've got to, we do have to protect those. And we're limited in what we can do, but I'll turn that over to to Mr. Spanos.
Legal counsel, Spanos.
So the social security number, the FEIN number, the tax ID number are all factored into the background check. So when you do a background check, the social security number, the birthday, the driver's license number, that information is all used for that purpose. It's not, it wouldn't be the only people that we have social security numbers from in the public. I guess we'd have to talk to finance to see if we, with some of our water bills or some of our other billing, if we have other social security information, private information that we have to protect. But that's the purpose of asking for a social security number.
And and the reason I ask that, Chris, because if we're going to accept state license, I would think that that would have already been provided. And then that's the reason I'm asking for custodial purposes.
Remember, we're talking about the establishment and we're not talking about the individual.
Okay, that I thanks for clarifying that. So.
So there's, there could be a difference. It could be a different person, could be, you know, the the manager of the establishment as opposed to the licensed massage therapist. That's specifically stated in there, talks about ownership and interest and employees and things like that that may go beyond just what they've submitted to their for their massage therapy license, which we're not asking for.
And if the sole proprietor language is is accepted, if that amendment is accepted, they will not have to apply, so they will not be providing that information. They'll just have to provide their state license, as you mentioned, along with, you know, an affidavit, some other basic information.
Yeah, and then this is my final question here is where it says or are intended to be employed by the applicant. So would that be every individual that's going to be employed at that establishment at that point?
So the current language, and this was taken from, again, from some other model ordinances, but the current language does have the establishment providing the information for all of their employees. So that is currently what's in here in in text amendment one. Now we can, you know, again, that that's something that we can revise, but that's the current language. I want to make sure that's clear.
At this point, we ran out of time.
Yeah.
There'd be a member that wants to go ahead and make that motion.
I'd move another five minutes.
Second. Thank you.
Second by Member Motney. Made motion by Member Ward. If you go ahead. Member Mosley?
We'll use your clickers.
Let's go ahead and vote, yes.
There are no needs to announce.
Thank you. Were you concluding your remarks?
Yeah, I have.
Okay, thank you.
Can I can I give a clarification too, just so we're clear on this? The social security number is only under section two, which is a list of all individuals who currently hold management and or supervisory authority over business operations with following information. So that's the only social security numbers that we're looking for. Oh, yes, that supervisor authority, yes.
Thank you. And for the record, that was our legal counsel. Member Motney?
I did have a another question for for staff regarding the proposed changes to this ordinance that we're going to be voting on here. Is there anything from your research in the proposed changes that have been put before us this evening that would impede the ability to address the challenges in our community that are presented by the illicit spa side that is, you know, that has been discussed?
No, it's the opposite. I think that the changes will help us find the, you know, and weed out the illicit businesses as opposed to impeding our progress. If that was, if I understood the question correctly.
I was talking about the application of the amendments to the language this evening, not the ordinance as was previously presented for us, which I came prepared to to vote on tonight.
So I have some reservations with the and and I I don't, I want to echo everybody's support. These are all great people coming forward that do great things. We're not worried about the great people. We're worried about the people who are doing the illicit things. And we're trying to to figure out a way to make it easier to identify and stop them. In my opinion, as we lessen the regulation on the sole proprietor, we potentially open up a loophole for someone who is less regulated. I am actually very I'm encouraged by the proposed changes because initially we were talking about not regulating proposed or uh, sole proprietors at all. The the amendments as drafted now do give us some requirements that impose on sole proprietors that will help. Is it as good as the others? No. Obviously, as Member Ward suggests, you know, we we can't go into the homes of people who are doing this at home, and they could be doing a lot of crazy things there. But we're not regulating home businesses. We're regulating commercial businesses. So the sole proprietor regulation is targeted to commercial businesses. But I I think, short answer to your question, could it be stronger? Yes, with these changes, I think it's doable. I think it's workable.
So and as you did research associated with all of the communities across Illinois that have passed similar ordinances that are starting to show up across the media, could you share your point of view as to how these changes then would line up with the actions that were taken in other communities, such as, for example, in Springfield, where the intended outcome appeared to be very positive by both those who are wonderful practitioners of this in an important way for medical, for therapeutic purposes, and those who clearly are at the other end of the spectrum. You know, in reading their articles, I mean, this seemed to have not been received with a degree of dissent that we've had in our community. As you compare what's proposed now to what they have done in in all of these other communities where these have have passed, what what are you seeing that's a differentiator that we could then be presenting a situation where where we've lost the forest, I guess, you know, for the trees here?
You know, I I can't speak to the results in all those other communities in great detail. I can only say that what we were attempting to do is consistent with what these other communities are doing. I have not seen enough to say that they didn't have any resistance when they tried to pass it. I I think we talked to someone today who was around when Peoria did it in two thousand eighteen or nineteen, and there was some similar resistance to it. I don't see that there is continuing concern or or I think the overall belief is that it has helped them better regulate this industry and to maybe cut down on the number of illicit businesses that are operating in the city. That's my impression. I did, I read a lot of different treatises and articles, both from massage therapy organizations and from others across the board. You know, massage therapy is unfortunately an area where there is a lot of human trafficking. It's not in the good, good businesses. Obviously, it's in the bad. And so that's why massage therapy is a focus of some of this regulation. It's not to grip them with bad people. It just happens to be that a lot of bad people are apparently doing things under the guise of legitimate massage therapy, and they're not. They're not legitimate. So it seems like, from what I could tell, and I don't profess to be an expert in this area, but it seems like the reception to this regulation has been mostly positive. But I I could be wrong on that. What I've seen, it seems to be mostly positive.
Thank you.
For purpose of members, we're out of time. Is there members who have further questions before we revisit the motion that's on the floor that's been seconded? Is there other members that want to extend the time to ask further questions of the city manager or our legal counsel to help? Okay. If not, then we have a motion on the floor. We have that seconded. I'm going to ask Member Ward, who made the motion, to once again, for point of clarification, to explain her intent of that motion, please.
Right. So I am moving that we approve the ordinance with three text amendments. The first one is the text amendment one on the application process. The second one is text amendment three, which allows an exemption for sole proprietors, but compliance with some of the operating requirements of section twenty-two dash one zero zero eight. And I move that we also revise with text amendment four, removing the language on the required dress code. So text amendments one, three, and four.
Thank you very much, Member Ward. Counsel?
One more clarification. We were just looking at, there's been a lot of moving parts today on some of these text amendments. And there was an addition that the social security number is requested with all of the applications. That was part of text amendment one. So I'm sorry I misspoke on that earlier. It does go beyond.
Before I ask the clerk to take the roll, are there any other members that have a question of the motion that's on the floor and has been seconded to help them in their vote? Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed then. Madam Clerk, if you would, call the roll, please. Or I'm sorry, electorally.
There are no needs to announce.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you. Next, we will move on. That's the only item of action, I believe, from what I see. Next, we'll move on to the Finance Director's report. Finance Director Scott Rathburn, if you'd come forward and share your report, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Council, City Manager, Deputy City Managers. April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five was the end of our fiscal year end. We'll be visiting that financial report for three months. It's the second of those three. As we we close out the year, we have two more months of of sales taxes to be realized. Those have been realized through the month of June. But there's still some audit closure to be had. So tonight will be somewhat of an abbreviated financial report. We're going to mostly cover the revenues and then talk about where our reserve projections are still for for the general fund and and then close out with the enterprise funds and and discuss the revenues there. Next slide, please. So typically, when we're going through the the fiscal year, when we close out a month, we're still at two months in a year. So like when we're doing March or April's report, the very first time, it'll show ten months of sales taxes. We've gone ahead and included all sales taxes that have been received through the month of June. So you can see in the year-to-date months collected column, we have a full year of all sales taxes. So the sales taxes at this point in time are mostly finalized. And why do we spend a lot of time talking about our major tax revenues? Well, the general fund, which houses our public safety, our parks, our economic development, community impact, all the administration administrative services, it's funded eighty percent via tax revenues. So they're not fee fee based like water and sewer and solid waste, which are typically more reliable based on usage. The economy can impact our major tax revenues. A policy can impact those. So that's why we spend a lot of time. It it can really affect what we have available for the general fund. So rolling down to the bottom of the year-to-date dollar budget variance, you can see this, at this point in time, we're showing a positive for these sales tax categories, variance of four hundred and forty-three or four hundred forty-two thousand dollars. Last month, when I gave this report, it showed a negative one point one five million. So we've had a one point six million dollar swing between the two months. So where did that come from? Last month, I I was talking about with state sales tax and home rule sales tax, the legislative action that closed a loophole related to online retail sales tax and how that it was impacting, positively impacting those two categories. So in January first, that legislation went into effect. It takes a couple of months for those to be realized. We've had three months of impact now. The first month, we had a fourteen percent increase over the prior year's revenues for both home rule and state sales tax. The second month, it went down to nine point five percent. Third month, it's gone up to twenty-seven percent positive variance over the prior year. So this has created a positive variance in our current budget, year-over-year budget as well for home rule and state sales tax. You can roll down this exhibit here and see local use tax is six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars under budget. So not to get into the weeds too much, but online, large online retailers, before this legislation went into effect, some of them were just collecting the base state sales tax, the six point two five percent, and remitting that to the state of Illinois. That would then be allocated per capita to communities. When this legislation went into effect, these online retailers needed to collect the home rule component. So not all communities have home rule. And not all communities have such a strong local economy as as Bloomington does. So we've seen this positive impact three months straight. There's been a lot of variance in the the those amounts over prior year, those percentages. Again, fourteen percent one month, ten percent another month, twenty-seven percent this last month, but it's still positive. So we are optimistic that this is going to positively impact the the future budget. It won't fully address, if this comes through with another month, our concerns related to FY twenty-six that we discussed during the budgeting process, reductions in PPRT, you can see on this slide that replacement tax, that's personal property replacement tax. When I say PPRT, it's coming in one point five million dollars under budget for the fiscal year, and we captured that reduction in the next fiscal year. So this will help offset that and then relate to the grocery tax, the the potential impact of that as well. So positive news there, hoping for one more month to get some visibility on the variance to prior year to see if that trend is going to stick. But so far, it's positive three months in a row. We're just not sure about how positive it's going to be. A couple of other ones I'll I'll highlight. You know, like to, you know, take a victory lap in finance, but sometimes we just get lucky. You can see utility tax. You know, it came in, we're nine thousand dollars over budget for the fiscal year. You know, with rate changes and things like that, sometimes things just work out. Food and beverage, that that is just a consistent tax revenue for the city. We budgeted six million. It came in at six million seventeen thousand. So very consistent year-to-year realization from our food and beverage. A local motor fuel tax down from our from our budget, two hundred seventy-five thousand. You can see prior year, it's down two hundred six thousand. We have seen two of the last three months have been positive from our seasonality perspective. So hopefully, that's that's going to rebound with a quick trip out on the west side, but we are continuing to watch that. Next slide, please. So instead of doing the income exhibit, income statement for the general fund, thought we'd just do kind of a high level. A lot of times we just jump to the end on that statement anyway, our reserves. So FY twenty twenty-five reserve projection, we had beginning reserves of forty-nine point eight million. That's a number that's on the exhibit. We had the auditors discuss that last October when they came in, November, I guess. We budgeted eight point seven million dollars use of reserves for FY twenty. We budgeted $8.7 million use of reserves for FY '25. That was some excess equipment. We had to preorder some fire equipment. It's, it's taken two to three years to get fire trucks and ambulances now. We had some, a larger capital improvement fund budgets for FY '25 that we're going to use reserves for. And then we added the Owens nursery purchase during the year of $5.5 million. So our revised use of reserves was 14.7 million. But right now we're projecting to use $7.9 million of reserves because we've, our, our revenues have come in better towards the end of the year here. Some expenses have come in under, we'll go through those in more detail. So the 49.8 less the 7.9 is the $41.9 million current ending projection for the general fund for reserves. I showed the prior month because we want to keep some visibility in what the changes are coming from. Prior month, 39.7 up to 41.9, and I just put down the state sales tax, home rule sales tax. And I forgot to mention, income tax came in way over in its final payment or final month, and we're not certain why that is. It came in $538,000 over our projection for the last payment of the year. Whether or not corporations are taking advantage of timing. Hopefully we'll get some more information over the Department of Revenue on that one. But that's, that could be a one-time anomaly, but you know, we'll take it. Next slide, please. And just real briefly, I'm just going to focus on the revenue trend down at the bottom. Annual budget, or this is where we are year-to-date actual, 1906 for the water fund. The budget was 20.7. You can see across for sewer storm, solid waste, we almost hit exactly on what the budget was with the, the increases projected. With water, it's the first year of the 33% increase. So there were some questions going into the year, whether or not there would be any impact what's related to elasticity in demand. So higher rates, lower usage, potentially, potentially the taste and odor issues impacted that as well. So we'll be watching that. The revenues that are being added, still plenty to cover the bond that we just did, plenty to, to cover the future capital improvements, but we just, we'll have to watch that to see if we might, may need to adjust the model going forward. But it could be just an anomaly for the first year. And then golf, we, we've been kind of highlighting that a lot lately. 115% of, of budgeted revenues came in at 3.2 million versus a budget of 2.8. Next slide, please. And then again, next month, we'll go through the full income statement for the general fund, showing where the expense categories came in. But just like to remind the community, all these reports and all the detail on the, on the budget reports are online on the website, the finance page. Next slide, please. And then any questions or comments?
Members, questions or comments? If not, thank you very much, Scott. Appreciate it. Next, moving on to, I think, the city manager's discussion report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief tonight. Phil, if you can put up my slide. I just really wanted to say thank you to the city staff that worked over the weekend to put on the events in our downtown. And I, I talk about this a lot, but the farmer's market is, is truly amazing and it's going all, all the way around the horseshoe and beyond of the museum square. A lot of people are going to it. I, I had the opportunity to go there, down there last weekend and talk to some vendors that are happy. And I was walking out and I got there late, but was walking behind a couple of ladies and heard them talking about it and how great it was. And I started up a conversation with them and they're both alums that live out of town from Westland. And they were just, they drove by and they were just amazed by what we have here in Bloomington. And it's just such a jewel and I hope people get out and take advantage of it. But it takes a lot of work on, from our staff and I just want to say how much I appreciate that. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. And then mayor's comments. A couple, well, several events that, that our city manager just reflected upon, I did as well. And I think we've got maybe a slide or two to call up on that. In particular, we got to meet Taco at the Miller Park Zoo. And what was so nice about that particular exhibit was the family of Jack and Janet Giegrich, longtime Bloomingtonians, involved in this community. And it was their family trust. They both have died, but they gave back and they have given back to City of Bloomington, to the zoo in a big way. And their daughter made mention when I was talking to them, how it was always grandma that loved to take the grandkids to the zoo. And her grandkids were there from Indianapolis, from California, from all around. And it was just a, a great, great ribbon cutting exhibit and for the zoo as well, which is a great jewel to have. And for the family, Janet, Janet and Jack's family to do that was extremely, extremely kind in their memory. So we greatly appreciate it and thank them for it. Also, we had events, as Jeff had indicated downtown. But the other was Juneteenth out at Miller Park. We're, staff that was there as well. We thanked them for being there on a hot Saturday afternoon. But in recognizing through the Bloomington Normal Chapter, the NAACP, recognizing the talents in memory of John Elliott, his son and wife were there to accept the award and, and his memory and all he has done for this community. They were very, very honored as we all were to be there. And then also a normal, former Normal Councilwoman Harris received an award as well and from the NAACP here, the local chapter. And then of course, our own former mayor, Mboka, was there and his family to receive an award as well at Juneteenth. So a lot of activity that afternoon at Miller Park, as well as the entire weekend. And it was my honor to be there and represent Bloomington in a small way. With that, are there members of the council that would like to share any comments? Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Council, Scott.
I'll, I'll be real quick. I have an ask, not a question, but I appreciate the, the, the passing of the ordinance that we just did. I appreciate the, the fact that we are, we are trying to tackle human trafficking head on, at the same time taking into account legitimate businesses and so that we don't step on those liberties as much as we can. I do ask that the city continues to work with folks like the Center for Prevention of Abuse and other, other places that work with them, so that when, if and when victims are found, they can be transitioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the council that have comments? Before I ask for, oh, I'm sorry. Member Lee.
Yeah, I would like to follow up with the council members, Abby Scott, and thank the council for passing this ordinance. You know, we do need to address the issue of human trafficking and definitely don't want Bloomington to become a hotbed because we don't have an ordinance. So I think it was a key pivotal motion to get this passed along with all the other municipalities around us that have passed this ordinance. So thank you and thank you for all the public commissioners. You know, you know, we would like to continue to work with all the legitimate businesses to make sure that their needs are being met. And I want to thank you, Jeff, City Manager Jeff Jergens, for the work you've done on the amendments and stuff. So yeah, thank you for getting this done.
Any other members, comments? If not, I, I too want to echo those comments of our city staff and the work that was put into revitalizing this ordinance and the changes and what have you. So thank you to all for that. And with that, if there is a motion to adjourn tonight's council meeting.
I'll move to adjourn.
Moved by Member Hendricks and seconded by Member Strazza. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Oh, we got a vote.
Thank you.
Nothing like bringing.